All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I will call our work session to order of August 10, 2022. It is a joint meeting between the City Council and the Charter Commission to talk about the consideration of the Charter Commission's recommendations for amendments to the current city charter, and I will pass it to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to add, but I did want to give the Chair of the Charter Commission, Chair Kirsch, some time to introduce the topic, and also then we can go to our City Attorney, Mary Techen.
Well, the Charter Commission has been working on proposed amendments to the Richfield Charter Commission, and, Mary, our City Attorney has done an outstanding job in putting this together. I was amazed when I looked at this to see how it was coming out. Thank you.
Oh, I've got nothing to say.
Nothing you want to hear, so.
So, we'll, first of all, we'll call on the Secretary to call the role?
Well, no, it's not a meeting of the, it's just a study session.
All right. Okay. So I guess with that, we're ready for discussion of the changes, and you've all on your computers had a chance to look at this. The document looks worse than it probably is because there are a lot of places where there's just a one-word change. So everything looks good. And Mary, if you want to lead us through the document, appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Kirsch. So, just a little bit of background procedurally, we did have, how many meetings did we have with the Charter Commission? Three? Two or three? Three meetings to discuss reviewing the charter and proposing some amendments? The Charter Commission has not yet taken the formal step of making an official recommendation to the City Council. Once we do this work session, and then if we need more meetings, that's fine, too, but the next step in the process would be an official recommendation by the Charter Commission to the City Council to adopt an ordinance that would then make the changes to the city charter. So, one reason for holding this work session is that we just want to make sure that the council members are comfortable with the proposed changes because it does require unanimous vote of the City Council, and so a lot of time and effort went into this, and we just want to make sure that the council is comfortable with the proposed changes before we officially start the process forward. And I will say, too, that the Commission, Charter Commission members are here also to answer questions that you might have. So, the city charter has been in place since 1964, and since that time, it has gone through a number of amendments over the years. I think most recently, there were some changes made in 2013, some minor changes. I don't need to go into a speech about the difference between statutory and home rule charter cities, but you are obviously a home rule charter cities, and home rule charter cities have some additional greater powers than statutory cities because they have the ability to adopt a charter and adopt provisions as long as they are not inconsistent with state law. So, a charter can be amended in a few different ways. I won't go into great detail with this because we have a lot of material to cover, but the first way the charter can be amended is by proposal from the Charter Commission, and that can occur at any time. A charter can also be amended through a citizen petition. And then, if that occurs, the Charter Commission must propose amendments based on receipt of a petition that is signed by a number of registered voters equal to 5% of the total votes cast at the previous state general election. That is not the situation here, so we don't need to go into that option, but just so you're aware, that is another way that a charter can be amended. Charters can be amended by ordinance, and that can occur upon initiation of the City Council, or the Charter Commission may also recommend to the City Council that the charter be amended by ordinance, and that really is the option, the process that we're following in this instance. Assuming we're going to go forward and the council is comfortable, the Commission would make a recommendation to the City Council to adopt an ordinance. So, I'm hoping that everybody had a chance to at least skim through the document. I know it's a lot of pages, and it does, you know, you see a lot of redlining there. Some of it's fairly minor. We're going to go over some of the more substantive changes, but throughout the document, we made some basic grammar, spelling corrections. We updated the year in the document to the current, to the current century, to the current year. We did some minor edits just to bring the language more up to date, and we clarified some of the dates regarding elections so that they were consistent with state law. You will see in a number of places throughout the charter, we included language saying elections to be held on the first date as authorized by state law. That's because in recent years, there were changes to statutes indicating that, for example, special elections have to occur on certain, on certain dates. We also changed references in a few places so that there was consistency with, instead of referring to six months, for example, we changed it to 180 days to be more precise because some months have more days than others, so using 180 days rather than six months is more precise. We updated the language to be more accurate, changing district to ward since that is, that is your makeup. We also changed some phrasing, in particular in Chapter 7, you'll notice this, we, we updated just the sentence structure so that we were using active sentences instead of passive sentences to make it more readable and easier to understand. And this is one example here that you can see in Section 7.12. Again, just changing the sentence structure, not the, not the meaning or the substance of it. And Gordon, I know is going to appreciate this, Commissioner Vasecki, we changed throughout the document all instances of shall to either must, may, can, or will. This is just for clarity and also to bring it in, in compliance with some court rulings that have interpreted the meaning of shall. And also, it's just more modern, up-to-date kind of language and makes it more understandable and easier to read. So, we can talk now a little bit more about some of the substantive, proposed substantive changes. Going to Section 2.05, I'm going to find the spot in my document here. This is really just a clarification on process, adding a subdivision that provides that when a vacancy on the council occurs, that the council must adopt a resolution declaring that there is a vacancy. Another proposed change to Chapter 2 is dealing with this section on the mayor, and as you will see, the way the original charter reads is that the mayor shall study operations of the city, and in time of public danger or emergency, the mayor, with the consent of council, will take command of the police in order to maintain order and enforce the law. That is the current language. The proposed language, and I think in part this stems from the latest pandemic and the emergencies that we've been dealing with, to propose language that was more encompassing of the actual process and the collaboration and coordination with the various departments of the city. This is language that I took from another city who also incorporated this language into their charter, and the language now, the proposed language is that the mayor will coordinate with the city manager, police chief, and fire chief as part of the emergency response system to communicate with the public and to aid in identifying resources in order to respond to the emergency, including but not limited to requesting assistance from federal, state, and local agencies as may be needed. So, I don't know if the council has any reaction or questions about that, but we, that's, it's kind of a significant substantive change, so we can certainly discuss that.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Thank you. Yeah, this was one that I flagged in my notes, too. I was a little bit concerned that coordinate was kind of vague, and I was kind of unclear in a true emergency situation, who has final authority? So, in the most recent situation with the rioting and the things, if the city manager said, "No, we shouldn't declare a curfew," and the mayor says, "Yes," what, what happens?
Councilmember, I think it's first important to remember that the charter is a very high-level, broad document, and so details of how things are implemented with respect to declaring an emergency and how that works, there are more details spelled out in the city code about, about who has the, the final decision-making authority on that. So, there's sort of a hierarchy of, of documents here. We have the charter, which is very high-level, general powers. We have the city code, which provides more detail about the process and the authority. And then we also have emergency response plan, which provides even greater detail on some of those issues. So, if that's, if you have questions about that, I can make notes, and we can follow up, too, and let you know exactly what the city code says on those, on those points. But I think that's why the charter language is drafted a little more general in nature.
Okay.
Because it's really given the high level.
Yeah, I was not aware that statutes, or statutes ordinances spelled that out in more specific, so I just need to look at that, or if others are interested, maybe it'd be helpful to hear from you on what, how that actually works or how that's spelled out more.
Okay.
My other question is just about the removal of "with the consent of council," that if you had a mayor who was out of control declaring emergencies, and you had a council completely universally opposed to it, that there doesn't seem to be any, like, this sort of implies like a check on that authority, and it would appear that that goes away.
Okay. And certainly, we can discuss leaving in that phrase with the, with the consent of city, of the council. I don't think that that would necessarily take away from the proposed language, and that's something the Commission can, can also weigh in on.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. I was, had the same questions, actually, as Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. I also, if we leave it without, with taking out "with the consent of the council," I think we have an extra comma that would be stuck in there, but I was more so wondering, I, I think our current system, which I think works well, is that the mayor, on their own, can declare a state of emergency, but then the council has to approve it to continue at the next meeting, and I feel like that is a good balance, that it's, it's not waiting on five people if there is truly a, like, within minutes or hours emergency. So, if, and maybe that's reflected more in the code as well.
That will not go away.
Okay.
That will still be the case, and that will still be the process for the declaration of an emergency. Again, this is really a, a very high-level, general power authorizing the mayor, and if we leave in consent of council, to coordinate with department heads on how an emergency is responded to. But that same process will remain as far as the mayor's ability to declare an emergency.
Councilmember Supple?
I think as, as long as the mayor can declare the emergency and the council can follow up later, that's fine. I do think it's good to probably take out the part where the mayor takes over the police force. I don't know if that was an appropriate thing, and I know that has happened in other cities.
And I have a follow-up question to that. Could you just clarify that item? Because those are like such drastically different things to, for the mayor to be able to take command of the police force and then to coordinate. Can you just explain that?
Explain the current language as I said.
The past language and the current language, just a little more.
Well, Mayor, to be honest, I'm not really sure what the intent of the original language is for the mayor to take command of the police. I guess if that's literal, the mayor would have the authority to take over the police department and make decisions instead of the police chief. That's how I would interpret that. I just know that, you know, given the experience in some other cities and, and the experience here in Richfield with, with recent emergencies, that what we discussed with the Charter Commission was this being more of a collaborative approach, allowing the mayor to coordinate with department heads on an emergency response rather than taking over the police department and having the singular authority to make decisions.
Thank you.
I think that's how I'm interpreting the language. I don't know if others have any different viewpoints on that, but.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also think it's helpful to expand it to the fire department, depending on the type of emergency. I mean, it could also be public works as well. So, as written, having the mayor take command of, being able to take command of the police department, it, it makes the chain of command really muddy in, at a time of emergency. So, for the fire department and the public works department, would that still be through the city manager? Or, you know what I mean? So, I think this clarifies it in a way that the other, the previous language did not.
Councilmember Whalen?
I guess I, I still agree with what Sean had said, that coordinate is such a vague term that I, if, if it is spelled out much more in code, I'd be comfortable with that, but I guess I'd want to see that before feeling comfortable with this because the original one seems written as if like there was an invasion from another country or something, and like we needed a paramilitary response, and that's not, hopefully, not the kind of emergency we're most likely to face, but, yeah, this, so I agree having it be more expansive, but this feels very vague.
Mayor and Council, I can certainly provide more information about what the city code provides in times of emergency as far as decision-making and authority. There are actually provisions in the city code which spell out process for various kinds of emergencies, even in case of civil emergency of the kind that you just mentioned. So, there are very specific requirements and allocations of authority in those, in those various scenarios.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So, I know you're going to give us more information, but just quickly skimming this, because this, this option does exist to sort of end an emergency, the council ending the emergency at the next meeting, I would really prefer with the consent of council language remaining there to somehow reflect that if possible, because when I read this, it almost sounds like that would be in violation of this charter thing, although I'm not an attorney, so.
Okay.
You tell me. But, I, yeah, I still feel uncomfortable with, with coordinate, and I, at least in a quick scam, I can't tell what would happen if the mayor and the city manager disagree on the appropriate course of action.
And I'll just say from personal experience, which this is personal experience that we don't have for generations of mayors often, and I'm going through this process of coordinating and working together, just whether it's here or if it ends up being in an ordinance or somewhere else that it can be referenced, being very clear about what the role is, what that means. I think we all worked very well together, but we were all learning and, and just thinking about where that clarification and guidance can be. Hopefully, we don't have to do that again for a very long time, but. Other comments or questions from Council on this? No? Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. This is a, a pretty minor change, and I, I referred to this earlier, that we are proposing to strike the language about the timing of an election and instead inserting language that it be on the first date authorized by state law. I will say this language about the less than 30 or no more than 60 days has caused a lot of problems in the past with special, the timing of special elections, so it will be very helpful to eliminate that language and, and add the proposed language. And then also changed the, in this section, we changed the president to Mayor Proton.
Councilmember Whalen?
I was very intrigued by this one as someone who got elected in a special election. Would this, as proposed, require us if a mayor or, I'm presuming we're proposing the same changes for a council member, if they stepped down like two weeks before one of the state-approved dates, would it require us to try and turn around and have it, okay?
No. Councilmember Whalen, because there's certain requirements for notices and publications and various things, so it wouldn't be possible to hold a special election that quickly. So, it'd be the first date authorized by state law, and you'd have to comply with all of the procedural steps in order to get there.
Okay. Do you have a, I mean, is that likely at least two months out, or do we know roughly what that, the quickest turnaround could look like?
Your city clerk could probably tell you the process more off the top of her head than I could, but I believe there's a notice that has to be filed with the county, 74 days in advance, and then there's also publication notices.
Okay.
That you have to provide, so.
Okay.
It's at least a couple of months.
Okay, thank you. I'm much more comfortable with that. That makes sense.
Other questions or comments on this? Councilmember Troutman, welcome. We are just going through, the first part of the presentation just had more, less substantial grammatical changes, and this is the second more substantial change that we're looking at, so we're just going through the, the changes to the charter.
Okay. Next one?
This, this proposed change has to do with calling for a special or emergency meeting. We added the language "emergency meeting" as well in addition to "special meeting." Those are two distinct types of meetings under state law. Instead of keeping the 12-hour notice, we thought it would be helpful to provide a little more flexibility as far as reasonable notice to members of the council and added just general language that any other notice as required by law. We also updated the type of notice so that it would be more in line with current notification procedures. So, proposed language is that notice of a meeting can be by personal delivery, telephone, or other electronic means. Of course, when this charter was originally adopted, we didn't have email. So, that's just to provide more flexibility as far as the notice process.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Is there a legal definition of reasonable?
I knew you were going to ask that. You know, it really is just to provide the most flexibility, and I think in a charter document, it's okay to do that. If we were drafting an ordinance, we probably wouldn't want to be quite as vague, but for a charter document, I think the term reasonable is generally understood, and I think it's, in my opinion, it's just fine.
Okay. I was just curious. I'm certainly not worried about this with any of our current staff or elected leaders, but there are places where elected people try and like host meetings with a quorum, but not everyone on purpose to like work around them, and so I just would hate for this to be able to get interpreted as like if we sent them an email six hours ago, we can still meet, and that's fine.
Well, and that's, it's, it's up for discussion, too. This is just proposed, proposed language, so if the council has concerns or, you know, that's a legitimate, a legitimate point. If that's, if that's a point you want to discuss or talk about, we certainly can.
Other comments or questions on this one? Councilmember Troutman?
I'm curious if any of the charter members have any thoughts or suggestions on, I assume this is a recommendation that the, that you're, you're all moving forward. I think 12, 12 hours doesn't sound like a great amount of time anyways. I think reasonable might give us more than 12 hours in almost any circumstance, and so I, I would tend to agree that I don't like reasonable, but it's probably better than 12 hours.
Well, I think one reason for the addition of reasonable is because we added, we added emergency meetings to this provision. So, in the event that an, an emergency meeting is required, and again, there are more detailed procedures in the code and other places that have to be followed, but I think that's one of the, you know, connections there is that we wanted the, the most flexibility in order, in the event of an emergency meeting.
Other comments? Okay, I think we can move on.
Is there a consensus one way or the other on that?
Others aren't concerned. I'm fine with the proposal. I, I don't, I don't, Eric, I'm just trying to, the worst-case scenario is that somebody could call, I mean, even, I'm just trying to think of how it was, if you could call a special meeting on 12 hours notice would seem still highly, highly irregular. Am I reading that wrong? That that's what it, it was previously, you could call a special meeting at 12 hours notice?
City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a good question. Actually, we just, Simon, you weren't here, but we just discussed.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. We just discussed another provision related to emergencies, and the preference seemed to be keeping in consent of council. So, if you have an emergency and you need to get council's consent at a meeting, you're not going to have 12 hours to do that in some cases. So, the two, you're going in two conflicting directions on those two provisions.
Mayor and Council, I just thought of this. I mean, I think maybe one way to address that is to have, whatever the notice is required for special meetings separate, and then reasonable notice for an emergency meeting, to separate those? That might be one way to approach it.
What do folks, what do folks think about that? Sounds, looks like I saw everyone say yes.
Okay. Chris, are you taking notes on this, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Taking notes. We haven't been recorded. You should get it all.
Okay, awesome.
I can start taking notes, too.
This proposed language relates to when ordinances and resolutions take effect. The proposed language is to add interim ordinances, which is moratorium ordinances, to a provision that says that they, they go into effect immediately upon passage. You, you may remember from the past where you've adopted moratorium, and we've had to do this sort of awkward process where we adopt a resolution that goes into effect right away, but then the ordinance doesn't go into effect until later because under your, under your process, you have to do two readings for an ordinance, and there's a period of time, 30 days, before an ordinance goes into effect. So, this would allow for the council to adopt a moratorium ordinance that would then go into effect immediately, and it really, this is something I think the, I know the community development staff is supportive of, too, because it really helps with the planning process. To be able, the whole purpose of a moratorium is to protect the planning process and allowing, excuse me, allowing the ordinance to be effective right away aids that process and protects that planning process. So, that was the primary motivation behind this proposed change.
I have a question around that. So, how come it just doesn't say moratorium? Is the only type of interim ordinance a moratorium?
That's really a, a term taken out of the statute. Interim ordinance is a, is a term for a moratorium.
Okay, so that, that only means moratorium. It doesn't mean anything else. Okay, got it. Thank you. Are there questions? Councilmember Supple?
Well, it's not really a question, but I do think this is a really good clarification.
Yep.
This is a, a pretty straightforward. This is a pretty straightforward proposed change, just that the city will codify and publish an ordinance code through electronic means, since that is now something that you do, something, something that's been in place for a while. Books, pamphlets, and loose leaf form are not the only method of publishing materials these days. So that's pretty straightforward. This is also another proposed change, just to, to come into, to be consistent with more updated practices. We learned through, through the pandemic especially, that having the ability to do electronic signatures is kind of a big deal. And there, there is some authority under state statute to do this. So it might be a little bit of belts and suspenders, but we felt including some language in the charter also couldn't hurt because that would give some broader authority to the city to set up its own process and procedures for electronic signatures. Okay, we're getting now into some of the election provisions. The proposed language is, again, we changed two weeks to fourteen days, just to be more precise there. And also, the next few sections, you'll note in the document regarding how notices are posted. We updated city clerk's office to Richfield Municipal Center. And also just included some general language about other information as required by law.
Any comments? Nope.
This is similar language added relating to the primary election. Again, noting that elections would occur on dates authorized by law and describes the, how the notices are published and posted.
Questions, comments? No. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I was just curious, short of doing something more major like instant runoff voting, is it, do we have to have primaries? Could we just have four candidates on the ballot and just have the one election? It does seem like kind of a burden on small campaign candidates to go through two cycles when oftentimes it isn't necessary.
Good question. I'm not sure I know the answer to that.
And maybe that's a sort of out of the scope of this kind of housekeeping project, but I just mentioned it as an issue.
We can check on that.
Okay, we can go to the next, oh, sorry, Councilmember Supple?
When you're checking on that, I know the school board did have like an election with fifteen people. So I don't know if the rules are different for a school board than they are for city elections.
We'll definitely follow up on that issue and let you know.
Thank you.
Similarly, for special elections, we added, and I, I want to make a correction here. This is one where, where, you know, I looked at this document so many times that every time I looked at it, again, I noticed something new. And sure enough, the, in my final review, I caught another inconsistency. So this is, to be consistent, I think we should change where it says at least two consecutive weeks. We will change that to fourteen days so that we are consistent with the other sections. And in the last sentence, I used shall, and I can't believe it. So we will change, we will change that to, will be held on dates as authorized by law. That's just a correction that I wanted to note to you guys.
Councilmember Wayland?
I seem to remember, not the details, but that we had a conversation with council and charter commission about special elections and some potential ways to not need to host them as often. If, and I think the idea was like if we were coming close to a, a normal election, that we could just, we were considering expanding the amount of time that we could go with a vacancy or appoint someone until the, and I, I don't think we ever circled back to that. Was there just not agreement and so we left it as is? Is that at all still in the conversation? And I'm particularly curious if the charter commission, I'm guessing, had a follow-up conversation after that, but I don't know what became of that.
Mayor, Councilmember Wayland, you're correct. We did have a conversation about, and this has to do with the vacancy language and when a, when a spot on the council becomes vacant and how much is left in the term. Under state statute, if I'm doing this by memory now, under state statute, if there are, if there's two years left, then, can't remember the cutoff. I believe it's two years and you can appoint. You don't have to hold a special election. I think the bottom line is the commission did discuss that and currently, let me see if I can find it. Yeah, in section,
Here's Nat.
Point oh five, subdivision three, for example, it says if less than one hundred and eighty days and more than ninety days, or, excuse me, I take that back. If one hundred and eighty days or more remain in the council member's term of office after the vacancy, the council must call a special election. I think the discussion was to increase that to say if, for example, if a year or more remains or, or two years is what statute says. My recollection from the commission discussion was that, that they are proposing to leave that as is. Am I remembering that right? Because we didn't propose any changes to that provision.
Commissioner, please.
Mary, I think the, I think you want to leave at least consecutive weeks for publication in the newspaper. Because fourteen days, two publications is,
Oh, you're right. You're right.
So I think you want to leave it the way it is.
Thank you for correcting me. You're right. Do any of the commission members have thoughts on the vacancy, the length of the vacancy issue? I think the proposal was to leave it as is from the charter commission.
Okay. I guess if, if others are not interested, to me, six months still feels very short. Just knowing that campaign season can often be nine months or more. And with it being different than state law, different than what other cities typically do, I guess the CD one just did a special election leading up to a normal election. But yeah, I guess I'm, I'm curious if others are interested in considering that. But if it is either people are not interested or there's not enough agreement, that we should unanimously pass the less controversial things, that also makes sense.
I will, I just want to, before we go to council, I want to allow commissioners, I know that was asked first. Are there other commissioners that have thoughts on this?
Am I, I'm, I am recalling our discussion correctly, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the way the commission, the charter read, you know, back in the eighties, allowed the city council, the remaining members, full authority to appoint a replacement. There wasn't a requirement for a special election. In fact, what started some of this conversation was a request from the city clerk because we had had in a course of two years, three special elections when Debbie Cattell got elected to the county commissioner. And you went from city council to the mayor. And so there's a lot of work and a lot of expense going with that. Now, in nineteen, oh, me, ninety-one, I got appointed to the city council when Marty Kirsch got elected as mayor. And for me, it seemed to work, obviously. But I also ended up getting sued out of the deal. And so there were people at the time that successfully changed the charter commission, personal opinion, based on the fact that I got appointed to an opening on the city council and not someone's best friend. Again, personal opinion. That and a sweet tea gets you a, or a dollar gets you a sweet tea at McDonald's. It certainly worked. And it works in St. Paul because they just appointed a replacement last week to an open city council seat. So we've had conversations about this on the charter commission. And I don't know that we came to a consensus on which way we wanted to go. And I think part of the reason that we're here today is to kind of feel out the city council for if we brought forth a change to go back to how this was thirty-five years ago. Given that changes to the city charter require unanimous support from the five members of the city council, are we spinning our wheels in the mud by coming up with this? Is this something that the current council would support? And do you see any danger signs for, you know, your individual campaigns or, or, or the city in general going forward?
Thank you. That's super helpful context. Other, other commissioners, before I go back to the council? Okay, so council members, what are you thinking? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I'm not sure exactly what the cutoff should be. I guess two years is the max. I think maybe one year seems appropriate in my head. But it, it does seem like it would be helpful to have the appointment option, both for the, reducing the complexity and the cost of the election. And also just that very few people turn out for those elections. It's like one-tenth of a normal council election. So at the very least, you know who made the decision if the council appoints somebody. And you can vote them out, or I assume the same recall procedures would exist for an appointed seat, correct? So in that case, it seems like the public has a backup option if the council were to appoint somebody really particularly terrible. So at least at a year, I would be totally comfortable. And if two years is the max and everybody else wants that, I'm okay with that. But a year definitely seems okay.
The member Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, I think I'd agree with that. You know, from, from the council perspective, it feels like, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to do. You know, and it's just, it's helpful to have a colleague. But I think when it was raised a couple of years ago, the, the commission had some, some reasonable concerns. So I'd express a preference for an appointment, but it wouldn't be something that, I mean, I think there's a, I, I recognize, I'm grateful for everybody's service on the commission. And I recognize that there's a role that it's independent of us, too. So it's not a hill that I would die on. I would just say, ah, this is, it would be, it'd be helpful.
Others? Councilmember Wayland?
I guess I'll just echo the comment about low turnout. I, when I was elected, I knocked on every single door in my ward and six hundred people voted. So it was incredibly low, despite attempts at letting people know. No one expects a Tuesday in February to be an election day.
Thank you. I would just say that I would be very interested in the appointment process because it's just, history has shown and that it's very likely that an existing council member could run for mayor. And that's not, that's just something that would likely happen. And possibly the need for special elections, you know, is not going to go away. And yeah, for all the reasons already stated, I'm very interested in the appointment process. I remember the initial conversations being brought up and like council member Wayland, I don't remember anything past that on the council level. So I don't know what the concerns were from the commission and, and, and all of that. So I guess I would say I'm interested in that. And the caveat is I, I don't know what that would all entail and the pros and cons. But to me, it makes sense, especially the burden on staff. I remember what our city clerk had to go through during those special elections. So that's what I'm thinking of. I also know I don't know all the information between the two options and why one over the other. So I'm in support of it, but I need to learn more as well.
Other council members? Councilmember Supple?
If I remember correctly, it's just it was the expense and the amount of staff time. If you kind of had one of those domino effects where, you know, somebody got elected to this and then somebody got elected to that and somebody got elected to that. So I think if you have a reasonable amount of time so we can eliminate having special elections every six months, that would be good.
So Mayor, council, just to clarify, I think what I'm hearing is that, I jotted some notes. So currently, under the charter, if there's ninety days or less in the term, then the council appoints somebody. If, if there's one hundred and eighty days and more than, if there's less than one hundred and eighty days and more than ninety days in, in the council's term, then the council must appoint an eligible person to fill the vacancy for the unexpired term. So it's only if it's one hundred and eighty days or more, then that triggers a special election. So I think what I heard was the council might be supportive of if there's three hundred and sixty-five days or less left in the term when a position becomes vacant, that the council would appoint. If there's three hundred and sixty-five days or more, then that would trigger a special election. Is that, is that what I heard?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So, yeah, that is what I said. I didn't hear any specific disagreement. But I did also hear a lot of mentions of the cascading thing, which is usually going to be on a two-year cycle. So just to be clear, the, if, if Simon ran for mayor and won now and vacated a seat, it would be, it's almost always going to be a two-year period. So this, the three hundred and sixty-five days would mostly be if somebody moved out of the city or died or whatever.
Right.
So I'm still okay with that. I guess I'd be curious what the commissioners think. But if we really wanted to avoid the possibility of people moving offices, it's almost, has to be a two-year period to get that benefit.
That's right. Councilmember Troutman?
And I would just point, make an observation, too, just as is ninety, there's not much that happens in ninety days. And so the, the value of appointing somebody for thirty days or sixty days, I mean, really is more ceremonial or political. Like a, a sixty-day appointment is really more just an occasion for somebody to say, hey, you're a council member, which I think kind of cuts against some of the arguments for not appointing even. Because then it just makes an appointment like a purely, a political process as opposed to, there's work to do over the next year or the next two years. Somebody should do the, do the work.
And Mayor, council, I will say that it really, it varies with charter cities from city to city, the amount of time. Richfield's on the lower end as far as triggering the special election. A number of charter cities have one year or three hundred and sixty-five days. So it really, it does vary. It's really a, a policy decision as to where you want that to be.
Did you have a question? No, okay. So is, are we good with this one?
I think so for now. It might be an issue that the, the full charter commission needs to discuss again, too, now that we have the council's input. And ultimately, the commission will have to make a recommendation that will come back to the, to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, we're only on chapter four.
I know.
Okay, moving on to chapter six, powers and duties of the city manager. This is mainly clarification. We struck the language with respect to the police. We no longer have a police civil service commission, so that's just an update. The change in subdivision six, this was proposed language. This was something that I added later. The commission has not specifically discussed this. I thought it was a helpful clarification. So this is the city attorney's suggestion and you can reject it if you'd like. But it's basically a clarification that the council, it currently reads that the city manager shall attend all meetings, not vote, but may not attend any meeting at which the council is considering their dismissal. That's how it currently reads. So I added language that said that the council may exclude the manager from a meeting where the council is considering the manager's dismissal. It just adds an option rather than saying the city manager may not.
Councilmember Wayland?
I'm fine with that. I'm more so worried, I hope that Katie gets to take vacation. Do we need the city manager or their designee? Or, or their representative or something? I mean, I, we have plenty of times the assistant city manager covers.
City manager, do you have something to say?
I mean, if we want to make it clear, I do.
I mean, if we want to make it clear, I do, before I go out of town, I do designate an assistant, or an acting city manager, rather. And I let you all know.
Got it.
So I am doing that in practice. I don't know if we want to codify it here, though.
I, I think we could do that.
Council member Troutman?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think that's a good idea, because I think you shouldn't have to appoint the assistant city manager, acting city manager, if you have like a doctor's appointment or something that, that would require you to be elsewhere, and that would be okay too.
You're never allowed to miss a meeting, Katie.
Also that.
Okay. Council member Hayford O'Leary?
I don't feel strongly about the exclude, or by default, or have the option to exclude. I just want to mention, you do refer to civil service commission in section two as the fire civil service commission, and here you've removed fire, so I don't know if you agree.
Okay. I can, we can make that consistent. That's a good, a good catch.
All right.
This is really just a clarification on wording. The, the first sentence was really duplicative of the remaining section. Currently, just striking the heads of departments and other officers, because we've said that also below, that the city manager will have the right to take part in discussion of all matters, and the department heads, and other officers. So it really is just eliminating extra language that we felt was not necessary.
That's good. Comments? Okay.
So moving on to eminent domain, this, the proposed change really was an attempt to just make this more encompassing, rather than referring to the various, all of the various types of easements that want, that might be acquired. We added, or proposing to add language that essentially just says property right, which would include easements or any other types of property rights that a city might be able to acquire by eminent domain.
Good. Questions? Okay.
There were, there are a number of provisions that we are proposing to delete, and the main reason being that these sections were relevant at the time that the charter was first adopted, but are no longer relevant. Did not include the text here, but, if I can find those real quick. So these are, and actually, I take that back. That's in a later section where we're eliminating irrelevant language. The reason for the deletions in, proposed deletions in chapter nine are because the process for eminent domain is governed by state statute. And so the provisions regarding how payments of awards will occur in a condemnation proceeding, how proceedings can be abandoned, and the last section regarding the condemnation of a public utility, those provisions, the process, all governed by state statute, and we felt that they did not need to be included in the city charter.
Sounds good. Questions? Okay.
This provision has to do with franchises. As you probably know, or remember, the city currently has franchise ordinances with, for cable TV, for electric, and for gas. This clarifies that there will be no perpetual or exclusive franchise granted by the city, and eliminates the language regarding allowing that to go to the voters. This is, this is a substantive change, and we can certainly discuss it. I think the, and the charter commission members can, can chime in here if they recall specifics about our discussion, but I believe this was just eliminating the option of having this go to the voters to, you know, eliminate complexity, and simply prohibiting exclusive or perpetual franchises with any entity.
Council member Whalen?
Thank you. That, that "or" is doing a lot of work that was added. To me, I would entirely agree, there should not be a perpetual exclusive franchise, but this seems like it would preclude us from entering like a five-year agreement of an exclusive franchise, which I may not totally understand the legal definition of a franchise, but I very much would be interested at some point in having like one provider of organized hauling, for example, for a set period of years, or for, I mean, isn't our cable franchise already one company providing it? I guess if it is "or" exclusive, that seems much more limiting than no perpetual exclusive.
So the, well, first, council member Whalen, to your point about organized hauling, those, that wouldn't be a franchise, so we're talking about contracts with utility, utility providers, so like gas, electric. I think that's, that's an interesting point. I, you know, commission members, you helped me out here if you recall, but I think the exclusive, the term exclusive, and maybe it's exclusive within the category of utility that we're talking about, rather than saying, because the city currently, I believe, has three franchise agreements that are done via ordinance, so it's not exclusive in the sense. But of course, you can only have one, one cable company providing cable, right? Or not. So maybe that's, that's the policy decision, whether you want to allow for competition in that respect, or whether you want to have an exclusive contract with one provider.
Commissioner Vizik?
Yeah, and council member Whalen, we did point out that same exclusive thing, or I pointed out the same exclusive piece. The, the way that it was worded, it was no perpetual franchise, nor any exclusive. So the "or" was already there before, but we did have a discussion within the group about franchises being exclusive by their nature, and the bigger issue was perpetual. But I don't specifically recall why we left in exclusive.
I, I, sorry. Go ahead. I think the reason was because we weren't changing the meaning there, because the "nor" was already in there, and so we left it, we just changed "nor" to "or." And so I think the conclusion was to not change the meaning, but, but we can have a discussion about changing it, if that's the direction.
Okay. I saw council member Supple's hand up first. Did you have a question still?
So, for instance, with broadband, the way this reads, we would have one company at a time?
Actually, we had two at, at one point, and the smaller company just didn't have a lot of accounts, and so now we're negotiating a contract just with Comcast, but it is possible to have more than one.
So exclusive. It would prohibit an exclusive franchise.
No.
No.
So we could have more than one, correct? Okay, right.
Council member Whalen, and then council member Troutman?
I'd just like to.
Okay, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
I'm sorry. I already spoke.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Council member Troutman?
First, I wanted to say, I wanted to appreciate the graphic. Just think, communicates a lot in a, with a sparse amount of lines. And I just, I think out loud for, for a second, in principle, if I understa, it seems useful to have the tool to be able to grant a temporary exclusive franchise, but I also want to think out loud that it may be a benefit to us and for smaller providers and prevent monopolies if, it, it's a hard process to change the charter amendment, and if we're dealing with larger corporations that are trying to force their way in, and they say, well, we're not going to come in unless you give us this exclusive power, this exclusive franchise, and, and we can honestly say, well, we, our charter doesn't allow it, it's going to be four years before you can look at that, then, then I think it may create an opportunity for smaller providers to be present and compete. So I, those, those are contradictory observations, but I just wanted to make them, make them both. But I would lean towards having that authority. I just would welcome thoughts from attorney or commission on, on those two sides of the coin.
Okay. So any responses to that before we go to council member Whalen? To what council member Troutman? Go ahead, commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I actually think, Simon, that was one of the points that was discussed, was although, for example, Comcast's franchise creates exclusivity, by its term, the actual franchise agreement doesn't say that they are exclusive, so the city maintains the power to add additional providers in that space. Now that it was, as the conversation has gone on, it's refreshed some of what happened in the room months ago.
Right. And to follow up on that, the, the franchise agreement with Comcast, for example, by its terms, is also not perpetual, because it's for a, you know, it was adopted years ago, was adopted in, you know, 2012, and I think you just renewed it by your actions, or you're about to. So that was 10 years ago. But by its terms, it's also not perpetual, nor is it exclusive.
Council member Whalen?
That, that clarification is super helpful, so we could, because I was mostly concerned about practicality, whether we want them to be monopolies or not, many of them are, but you're saying we can have, we can have a, basically a contract with only one company, it just can't have the words in it that preclude anyone else from being, us from doing other contracts as well.
Yeah. Council member Whalen, as a practical matter, you may have only one contract with one provider, but you would have the legal ability to have another. Yeah, correct.
Okay. That's super helpful. So I think that clears up that issue. Any other questions on this item? Okay.
This is mainly just clarification language, that the, subject to applicable law, the council may, by ordinance, regulate and control the exercise of a franchise, including the maximum rates, fares, or prices to be charged. It's really just mainly clarification. I don't think it changes the substance of the provision.
Okay. We're good to go there?
This is also mainly clarification language. The council may, if the public interest will be served, contract with a private party for the operation of a utility. That just striking extra language that wasn't necessary, responsible person, co-partnership, there's all various types of entities that a private party might be. And the other minor changes are just for clarification.
Comments or questions? All right, good to go.
Last chapter, we had some miscellaneous and transitory provisions, mainly clarification language, sentence structure. Last sentence is allowing the city to provide notices electronically as an additional form of notice, to the extent allowed by law, for official publications. Again, just bringing this more in line with modern practices.
Okay.
Okay. Oath of office, every elected officer of the city and any other officer, so required by law, must. So this is mainly just, again, clarification language. We propose to strike the city manager, because I don't believe the city manager takes an oath of office, and is not required to do so. Yes.
Council member Troutman?
I was actually just thinking about this the other week. Is there an exemption, like a conscientious objector exemption? There are certain faith communities and traditions that would not, that would just by conscience not take an oath, or allegiance, they would, that would violate their conscience to do that. Would, if somebody was duly elected, would they be unappointed if they refused an oath?
I don't know, council member Troutman? If somebody did have such a right, and that were a right they had by law, then I think that would be something that the city would have to accommodate, but I don't know if that's a thing.
Okay.
You, maybe you, you've done more research, research on it than I have.
It'd be an interesting constitutional question. It'd be compelled speech. It'd be an interesting First Amendment challenge.
Okay. I'll put, I'll put that on my list.
Thank you. Council member Supple?
I think that's why it says swear or affirm. Affirming is different than swearing, so the question might be whether or not you say an oath of office. It's the oath part that I think is troublesome.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay.
Official bonds, this is also mainly just clarification language, referring generally to officers, rather than listing them, as we don't want to be, you know, we want to be more, a little more general, so that we're catching anyone as required by law to supply a bond, if they're required to do so.
All right, looks like we're good to go.
This change, we talked a lot about this one. This is mainly just striking language that we felt was unnecessary. I don't know what that last sentence means. Every quarter officer receiving monies within 30 days shall make return under oath and be entitled to duplicate receipts. I think it's just a proposal to strike.
Yep.
Unnecessary language.
Questions?
If anybody has thoughts about that, please let me know.
Okay, looks like we're good to go.
And finally, I think this is one of the last slides. This is proposed, brand-new language relating to authority to make certain public expenditures. Under the law, the city council and the city has authority to spend money only for public purposes. There are many state auditor opinions about what, you know, what cities can spend money on, what they're allowed to spend money on. Essentially, there has to be statutory authority for the expenditure, and you have to show that it's directly for a public benefit and not a private benefit. Charter cities have the unique ability to establish some additional powers in areas like this. And so there have been questions that have come up over the years about expending funds for various festivals, community events, different things. And technically, those kinds of expenditures are not authorized by state statute. And so quite often, you know, cities will set up nonprofit groups who will handle those events, or set up other groups who will do fundraising, et cetera. This would give the city the authority to expend funds for these kinds of activities for international cultural, community events, festivals, city celebrations, and we've also added for other employee benefits, employee recognition, funding for conference attendance. These are things that are not spelled out explicitly in state statute, so putting it in your charter would allow for additional authority to do those things. And I will say that our office did vet this language through the state auditor's office as well, because, you know, there's always some pushback there about what expenditures are authorized and what aren't. And several charter cities have made this change, and the state auditor has sort of blessed it. So we're proposing it here for, for your consideration.
Comments? Council member Whalen?
Can you just explain the numbered section? That is just, the sentence preceding, and then the criteria and the numbers, that is just. that is just clarifying that this policy will not reduce our authority for public expenditures? Or can you explain that preceding sentence and the numbers?
Right, so that sentence states the policy will not limit the authority of the city to make expenditures, which, and then the three bullet points are essentially stating the legal test for what a public purpose expenditure is.
So then, do the things in the bottom paragraph, do expenses for those purposes still have to meet one, two, and three?
Right, and I think by this language, what we are trying to say, and maybe we can add clarification, but that the items, the types of events listed in the last paragraph would meet the public purpose expenditure test.
And then I think last clarification, if I'm reading the first sentence correctly, this is, this would give us authority to create a policy that has not yet been written, and then if we passed this, we would then have to create that?
Mayor, councilmember Whalen, actually, the city already has a policy, so this is really just building on the policy and providing additional authority for the types of expenditures that can be made.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you. I think you answered my question, but I'll answer, just to make sure I understand. So we have, we fund these things already, or we don't? Or our policy allows us to do that? Or, I mean, it seems like most cities provide for most, I know we don't necessarily provide for events, provide for training, and we provide staff for events. Is this something that we, we don't have authority now? Or we only have colorable authority to do these things right now?
The city does have a public purpose expenditure policy. It includes authority to spend money on certain things. I don't have the policy in front of me, but what this does is it expands and broadens the types of expenditures that the city can make. So if this goes into the city charter, what we, what staff would do is bring revisions to the city council for the public purpose expenditure policy that would then be consistent with the new charter language.
Councilmember Troutman?
If, if we, if the purpose was to expand the authority that we have now, is it necessary to be as specific and descriptive? Could we not just say, to the full extent permitted by statute, as referred to in the policy? And then as the statute changes, we wouldn't, because the statute could presumably change, and we're potential, like, at this moment, it's expanding at some future date. It might be eliminating, it may be limiting, but it would, it would be harder to change the charter.
Right. Councilmember Troutman, the issue is that statute does not provide authority for cities to spend money on community events, festivals, cultural events.
Okay.
So by putting it in your charter, it's providing that authority. So if we, if we only said as authorized by statute, that doesn't get you anything more.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? I'm just happy to see this, thinking about how many discussions I've had with community members over the past several years in requests for funding of all kinds of things. I'm excited that we have that in there, and I'm interested in looking at the policy so that we can be very clear what we do, don't do, what we can support and cannot support. But yeah, I'm in support of this. Other comments? Okay, we're good to go.
That's it? Chapter 13, we're also proposing to delete a couple of sections that, this is what I mentioned earlier, that these provisions were relevant when the charter was first adopted, but the language therein is no, is no longer relevant.
We're good? Okay.
I guess that's it. I know that was a lot. We've taken some notes on council feedback on some issues, and the next step, and Chris can maybe talk about this a little more, but the next step will be to hold another meeting with the Charter Commission to talk about some of the questions and the feedback that we got here tonight. And then we will, I don't know if we'll need another work session, maybe we will, but we can talk about that amongst staff and determine what the next best step would be.
Great. Yes, Chair, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Mary and Chris. You've done an outstanding job, and this is a lot of heavy lifting that you've done to get this put together for us. And I also want to thank all of the charter, or the city council members that are here tonight because you've given us some good input. Because as you know, when it comes to the council, it has to be unanimous vote, so.
Yep.
Whatever problems we have, we need to get those cleared up before we get all the way to the council to find out that we're one or two votes short. So appreciate your coming to those meetings and helping us out to get a good document put together. Thank you.
Other comments? I'd just like to also thank the commission members. This was a lot of work. Thank you so much, and obviously, it was clearly, really, very much needed. So huge thank you to the commission members and to our staff for collaborating on this. I think they're great updates, and I'm really happy. There was a lot of little things, and there was some substantial things, and they, they make sense, and it's going to help us be stronger in our governance. So thank you to the commissioners, thank you to our staff. And any other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman?
I just also wanted to say thank you, and these are one of those commissions where there are a lot of hours, and there's not a lot of high, not, not a lot of public recognition. So thank you very much. I'm grateful, and it reflects a lot of, a lot of work, good work, and to Chris and Mary, too.
Thank you. All right, I will adjourn our work session. Thank you, everyone.